I'd like to call the Mentor City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, June 20th, 2017, to order. The invocation will be given by Councilman Donovan.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just ask everyone at this time if you'd please power off any cell phones or electronic devices. Thank you. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Landig?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
We have no public hearings. New legislation. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-eight.
An ordinance to authorize transfers of funds, advances of funds, and revisions to appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Lingefelder, please.
Thank you, Mr. Philippiac, members of council. This is a pretty standard ordinance that we normally have, just transferring funds and appropriation revisions. The only large item on here would be the $1,250,000 that we'll be transferring to our self-insurance fund to cover the medical expenditure since we have changed to the self-insured. We are in the process of doing an analysis of that fund right now so that we can look at the first five months of the year, and hopefully this week we'll have that done and be able to say how we're doing this year using that new fund.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-eight has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-nine?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a final change order to JTO Inc. for the Lake Heasley Road Phase Three project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President, and this is just a, as it states, the final change order. It's a collection of items to close out this contract. If you had any questions on any of the details, Mr. Swigert will be happy to answer those for you. I will point out that we will be seeking reimbursement for 50 percent of these consistent with the original award, although it's not certain if those funds will be available to us.
Gentlemen?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-nine has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with CCBCC Operations LLC for beverage sales at municipal facilities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President, and every three years or so, we will bid out our agreement on beverage service, which provides essentially both fountain drinks and those which go into the dispensing units at our city recreation facilities. Mrs. Korsheim?
So simply to authorize that agreement with CCBCC and approve that.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-nine has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-nine?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a final change order to JTO Inc. for the Lake Heasley Road Phase Three project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President, and this is just a, this is, as it states, the final change order. It's a collection of items to close out this contract. If you had any questions on any of the details, Mr. Swigert will be happy to answer those for you. I will point out that we will be seeking reimbursement for 50 percent of these consistent with the original award, although it's not certain if those funds will be available to us.
Gentlemen?
Motion to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-nine has been approved. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty?
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with CCBCC Operations LLC for beverage sales at municipal facilities and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President, and every three years or so, we will bid out our agreement on beverage service, which provides essentially both fountain drinks and those which go into the dispensing units at our city recreation facilities. Mrs. Korsheim?
So simply to authorize that agreement with CCBCC and approve that.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash sixty has been approved. Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one sixteen?
A resolution determining that it is necessary to continue to levy a tax outside the 10-mil limitation and requesting the Lake County Auditor to certify the total current tax valuation of the city of Mentor and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by replacement at the same rate of the existing 1.5-mil tax levy, all for a continuing period of time and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Defer to Mr. Hennig.
Mr. Hennig.
Okay. I'm not used to him seating the floor. A condition precedent to either renewing or replacing a levy or even enacting a new levy is for the taxing authority to request from the auditor the amount of money that will actually be generated from the levy. In this county, and I don't remember exactly what, you know, political entity it was, but a number of years ago, the entity sought to have a levy placed on the ballot, and it passed, and it ended up generating 10 times as much income as what was expected. And the embarrassment of riches that it generated caused some concern even down in Columbus. And I think this is primarily why this part of the code exists, is to make sure that kind of thing doesn't happen, so that when you ask for a certain mil levy, you know exactly what you're going to get, and the auditor checks your math. And that's what this does. We are asking the auditor to check our math on how much we think is going to be generated from a replacement fire levy, so that we've made sure that how we're budgeting going forward is going to be consistent and met with the funds that would be generated from this levy if it's replaced. So you pass this, it goes to the auditor, he has a very limited amount of time to respond. He'll respond before your next meeting, and if the information that you get back is consistent with what you understand you're going to be getting, then you can go forward if you wish and vote to actually have a replacement levy put on the ballot for the fall. Any questions? I could try to answer them, although I don't know if the fire department is ready to talk about the necessity of the levy.
Mr. Philippiac, any additional comment?
No additional comment at this time, although if council would prefer, we can offer up some general comments perhaps at your next meeting when this information is presented as to the reasons why the administration is recommending the replacement. We'll be prepared with a presentation if you'd like at that time.
Gentlemen?
Move to suspend.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash R dash one sixteen has been adopted. Second reading. Ordinance number seventeen dash O dash fifty-six?
An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a Mentor incentive grant with Alloy Bellows Corporation and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Philippiac.
Thank you, Madam President, and at this time, we'd respectfully ask council to carry this forward to a third reading.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Landig?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Resolution number seventeen dash O dash fifty-six will go forward to third reading. Third readings, we have none. Managers report.
Thank you, council. Sidewalk repair contractor A&amp;J Cement is currently working alongside of State Route 306, Stockbridge Road, and Middlesex Road. As a result of that, the northbound traffic down State Route 306 has been detoured east on State Route 84 to Plaza Boulevard, and then north to Mentor Avenue, and then back west to 306. The detour will remain in place until June 30th. Due to the amount of deterioration found within the concrete on the I-90 bridge deck at Garfield Road, the scope and repair of that project has been greatly expanded to include full-depth concrete replacement on two relatively large sections of the deck. This will add about seven weeks to the construction schedule there, so the detour will remain in place until about mid-August. The traffic signal pole foundations were being constructed by Garfield Park on the south side of Mentor Avenue last week, requiring the eastbound lane closure. While those foundations are curing over the next two weeks, you can expect intermittent lane closures in the eastbound direction to accommodate the curb ramp reconstruction. The westbound lane is expected to remain closed for the next two weeks while the road winding work is completed as well. And we've had off-duty Mentor officers out there assisting with the weekend traffic as needed, although it really hasn't necessitated much of a need there. Slowed down, but it seems to have regulated itself. Very pleased to say that our hockey program received recognition from USA Hockey. As a result of our growth at the lower age level, we have successfully achieved 2-2 Challenge Gold status for the 2016-17 season, so I think that's consistent with what council's goals were, to try to improve the overall program and bring more participants into it. This weekend, On Tap and Uncorked takes place on June 24th, this Saturday, from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. The event will feature 28 micro burrs, four Ohio Vintners, gourmet food trucks, and live music. Each entry ticket entitles you to 15 tasting tickets and one free glass. Mentor Junior Olympics takes place from 9:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. this Friday, June 23rd, at the Mentor High Track. The track meet is free to all children within the Mentor Public School District. You can register onsite the day of the event, and children may participate at no cost in up to three events. And finally, we have some new businesses that we want to welcome into our community. Comprehensive Family Dental at 7223 Center Street, The Proper Pig at 9582 Diamond Center Drive, Empower Nutrition at 7659 Mentor Avenue, Shepherd's Buy Trade Sell at 4685 Corduroy Road, Carter's and Ash Kosh at 9597 Mentor Avenue, Best Light LED at 8909 East Avenue, and Colmar Direct at 8671 Tyler Boulevard. And we thank them all for their confidence and investment in our community, and we wish them the best of luck going forward. That's all.
Fluck's correspondent?
Council is in receipt of two liquor permit requests, one new permit for Riser Foods Company, and another transfer of location for an existing permit for Nusa Bistro LLC.
Thank you. Commission committee reports. Councils in receipt of the meeting minutes of the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals from May 9th, 2017, and the Municipal Planning Commission minutes from May 25th, 2017. Old business.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Blake.
Ken, just a few minutes ago, I heard you talking about traffic signal pole peers in the Garfield area, and I think I see those same things going in on Heasley. I saw it look to be like a concrete form in place right across from the Whalers Cove entrance. Is that what that is? Are we getting ready?
Mr. Swigert, do you want to bring an update on that project?
We currently have a subcontractor working for the city installing traffic signal pole foundations, as well as conduit. We'll be running some electrical wire for the proposed traffic signals, so that work is currently going on.
Oh, that's fantastic. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam President.
Any other old business?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Marn.
Just to cast off to the administration, everyone that worked so diligently on putting together our new Mentor City magazine. It's amazing how even being on council, you learn a few things out of this every year and what's going on at the city, and just, it's a piece well done. And I know normally, you know, we get it, everyone reads it, and it goes on our main table that sits there in the house for the rest of the year to figure out what's going on in the city of Mentor, and it's very helpful. And also, just what I like too about it is just how we focus on some of the smaller business, like flux. I went there and bought my wife some birthday presents from her favorite store, and how well that was received, both by them and other people I heard talking about it just at lunch today. So it was neat. So, good job, you guys.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier in the meeting, and this is going to be kind of getting to be old business as we wrap up the Heasley Road project, but you mentioned the change orders and the possible reimbursement on a $5 million project. Is that because we're going over the budget or because some of the items are not eligible for reimbursement? Just a little more information perhaps from the city engineer?
Yeah, just a recap. We secured over $3 million in federal funding on the project. About 1.7 million of that was a federal earmark, which was 100 percent federal, 0 percent city match. We had about, we actually had over $2 million of STP funding and 50 percent match secured for the project. However, when we opened bids, we were, the construction cost was less than what was originally expected, so the STP funds were capped at approximately 1.3 million. So we've, during the course of the project, we've executed several change orders. We've utilized primarily the contingency account for the project. So in order to execute the last change order, we will be over our contract amount by $90,000. Some of the federally funded, some of the federal funds weren't able to go to all project items. But we feel that we are eligible for about 1.5 million, so we feel there's about $200,000 of federal funding eligible still in the project at a 50 percent split. So we're hoping to get a majority of this covered, at least 50 percent.
Big project. Thank you for the clarification.
Gentlemen? Any other comments? I'm not sure if my comment teeters on very old business or new business, but I just wanted to compliment the administration on the parking lot, and looking forward to driving on it in a day or so. I know it was a little bit, took a little longer than we anticipated, but it was long overdue, and it excellent improvement.
Thank you for that.
Just in time for some big events coming up, so.
Well, thank you for that comment. We appreciate that, and that actually, it's been a challenge with all the activity that goes through this complex at any time of the year, but it's worth pointing out that that is the first time that those lots had ever been resurfaced. And Matt Schweickert and the Public Works Department did an absolutely outstanding job of preparing those parking lots prior to the resurfacing, and a lot of the delay in the project was due to the base that was underneath the lots that was in much, much poorer condition than we anticipated. But prior to that, all of the concrete curbing, sidewalks, ramps, were all done in-house by our Public Works Department with great speed and efficiency and trying to work around and keep while traffic flow continued and parking continued. So, yeah, hats off to their crew.
Much needed improvement. Thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen?
On new business?
Mr. Krieger? New business. Go ahead.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion. We've had a problem down in my ward in French Hollow concerning traffic. In an effort to solve that problem, I want to move to add two stop signs at Wheeler Court, South Chandle and Chandle. It kind of mirrors, it's a dip down there. We currently have three stop signs at Hilltop, South Chandle, and that, and this will just mirror that, so people become familiar. It's the same at both ends. But I need council's approval to put those stop signs up. We're going to make some other changes down there as far as striping and painting and speed limits, but I move to have these two, excuse me, two stop signs installed.
Second.
Mr. Marn?
Where'd this come from?
What?
Madam President?
Can someone fill me in? Because I got this email at 546, number one, which I just literally write cells in a meeting. Number two, we spent a number of work sessions discussing on how we're going to handle our traffic calming situations and that process. And I was of the assumption that part of that process was going to stop the automatic knee-jerk reaction to add stop signs, which in my 18 years on council is not a traffic calming procedure. So, fill me in where we're at, and how this could come about under new business and then be voted on immediately.
Right. Well, I appreciate that comment. I was going to try to slide a comment in there where I could, and we appreciate that you hearing this on short notice. We're attempting to provide some consistency between those intersections. So, less about traffic calming, because I think we would probably have preferred not to have the original intersection signed in the manner that it is, but it has seemed to prove a little bit more effective at regulating that three-way intersection on the south a little bit better than was done in the past. On the north intersection, which mirrors the conditions to the south at South Chandle and Chandle, we feel as though it's been recommended by the engineering department and it's been reviewed and approved by our traffic working group internally. And the belief is that it will create a safer scenario because it won't confuse drivers who will take that short drive along the north-south section of Chandle and go through both of those intersections and see them treated in a disparate way. So there are some additional pavement markings that we're going to be performing out there that are part of traffic calming, but we would not view this intersection, the stops, the signage at the intersection, as strictly a traffic calming effort. It's actually more to provide some consistency in those intersections for traffic safety purposes. So, the point being, either we, however we choose to go forward with the signage at those intersections, it would be the administration's recommendation and working with the ward councilman to treat them the same because of the short distance between them.
Now, should we have a staff report dictating that, showing us the different options and everything that we need to consider except the two-paragraph email, an hour and 14 minutes before the meeting started? So we're not blindsided?
Can I interject something there? I mean, this is not something that, we've been discussing this for over a year.
I have not seen anything on it but an email right now. I haven't seen a staff report. I haven't seen a map. We spent all that time in work sessions about traffic calming, and now all of a sudden, this is what I thought, that this was part of traffic calming, and now all of a sudden it's not. I don't know how you could make a hasty decision on this without having all the information in front of you so we could all study. I know, Mr. Blake, and I have talked in the past where he was blindsided about receiving something the night before that was lengthy, and we received this an hour and 14 minutes before. There's also been instances where certain individuals, like myself, wanted things on first reading because they thought new information was coming to light, and there was conversations about that. This is totally new subject that is just coming out of nowhere, and now you want me to vote on it.
Well, having said that, this started when, I believe you, I think you were president at the time of council, when the first stop sign at the other end was proposed. At that time, I was relatively new on council, and I was informed by another council member that normally we don't do that unless the ward councilman wants it. And I was unaware of that, and of course, at that time, we had a few of the residents out in the gallery here, and of course, I said, "Well, if that's the case, then the ward councilman wants it." And that was the way the first stop sign came in.
So why do we spend all that time in those work sessions about establishing a traffic calming program? What you're telling me is this is calming traffic, and it's basically, that's what it's doing. How can it not be?
Actually, Mr. Marn, I would not, I would not describe those stop signs as a traffic calming measure. This comes out of the recommendation of the city engineer, and this subject came up within the context of traffic calming measures in that neighborhood. The traffic calming measures that we intend to put into place do not require council's action, and it will be primarily pavement markings. Because this is an unwarranted intersection, it will, we would request that it be put into effect through council action as the intersection to the south was. We're simply seeking to get consistency for safety's sake out there. I would not view either of the actions taken in the past for the three-way stop or the action that we're recommending you take now as a traffic calming measure, because you are absolutely correct, and you've heard us say it hundreds of times here. We don't view traffic signal as a stop signs, frankly, as traffic calming measures, although they can, they can serve in that manner, but they're not used for that purpose. So what we're trying to avoid is the person that's traveling from, let's say, the north, who drives through the intersection at Chandle and South Chandle going south, and then approaches an identical three-way stop and is now confronted with a three-way stop, and is inclined to
five miles per hour above the posted speed limit, the 85th percentile, and, which is, which doesn't qualify typically for traffic calming. The speeds north of Hilltop were about seven miles, seven miles per hour over the speed limit, which, which could qualify for our traffic calming program. However, there were a couple of things that really, and that was, I guess, that one section north of Hilltop could, could be considered for traffic calming, but when you look at the, the distance between the intersections, it's less than 1,000 feet, it takes, it basically knocks it out of our traffic calming policy. So, both locations, although the speed north of Hilltop would put you into a traffic calming, you know, area, the distance of the street, the fact that there are no, no curbs on the street also disqualify it. So, we looked at it, we just looked at the intersection in general, but during our review, one of the things that, that was, was really brought up during the review was the inconsistency of the signing between two intersections that close together, so, which may be, which may be leading to people either not stopping at an intersection or not following the traffic laws. So, that was basically where our recommendation came out, it was just the inconsistency of two very similar intersections so close together in an area that when looked at, you know, like I said, nor, both of these areas just don't qualify for our traffic calming program, but we felt that there was an inconsistency, inconsistency in signage at those two locations.
Now, Mr. Zampito, going forward, should we make a procedure or something for us to follow for the difference between traffic calming program and traffic consistency? So, at least that future councils and futures administrations could look it up and say, "Okay, this is what the administration and council has decided," so that we're just not, this isn't coming out of blue once again?
I think it's a fair point, and I think any time, you know, we put our traffic calming policy together, there are other factors that are going to come in and no policy is going to address 100% of the situations. I think the engineer tried to address it. We had a short road that did show a nominal increase in traffic speeds coming southbound. I drive that road myself frequently and anecdotally can say that as you approach that, is it Wheeler? That, that intersection, cars coming southbound on Chandle tend to, because there's no stop there, they tend to come across center and kind of, it's a, it's a large intersection, they kind of keep rolling. And I've advised my daughter when I was training her how to drive to make sure you stop well behind the stop sign.
Right, I remember our seventh conversation, correct.
People tend to really cut that sharp or on a, on an easy angle so they can keep rolling. The data showed that. So, normally, you know, you're not going to use signs to, to regulate speeds. In this case, though, certainly, one of the consequences of making this a consistent signage with the south end is you will require people to stop there, and they will be more inclined to take that turn appropriately, because they have to stop, you'll take that turn more on a 90-degree angle now than cutting that corner. So, by, by our own definition and looking at trying to make that intersection safer, I believe that the committee, the work, the traffic working group came up with a solution here, and, you know, although we don't have that in our toolbox, I think that the recommendation was, was the council go ahead and do it.
Sure, and I agree, I mean, all of you guys make sense. My main thing is this with the program that we started. You know, and so there's got to be a sub-program or a different program called traffic consistency, so the future administrations and future councils realize this, and that the administration, whether future administrations or future councils, and the councils would receive a normal, call it packet based on the information, you know, I've got no problem with it. But like I said, it's, to me, this has been thrown out, and that's what I thought we were doing with that traffic calming program, and, and to make it more consistent across the board. You know, I have no problem with it now that I understand that there's a difference between traffic consistency and traffic calming. But, no, it's fine, I mean, it makes sense now, but like I said, it just, I thought we were going back and basically erasing what we worked so hard along on both administration and council with those, what, three work sessions?
Madam President.
And that's fine.
Madam President.
Yeah. Could I ask a question?
Yeah, you're the President.
Mr. Philippiak, Scott, you were done?
Yes.
I didn't want, okay, didn't want to interrupt.
Now, I understand it.
Just, yeah, just, just so you don't think that anyone that John is trying to bypass the traffic calming, am I correct that we have received multiple emails and requests from residents in that area for a multitude of traffic calming measures? Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes, but, but.
And, let me think.
Yes.
And this stop sign was never requested by these residents?
No.
This stop sign was brought by your traffic group? This was not, the traffic calming issue is still in discussion in that area, and we will be going forward with that and following procedure, but this particular stop sign was never asked for or mentioned by the residents? This was strictly engineered and the traffic calming that came up with, to be consistent to come up. So, the traffic calming is still, there is still, John can tell you, there's still a long litany of traffic calming measures that are requested.
This is a prequel.
That is a perfect way to explain.
This is a prequel, that I didn't know there was such a thing. Okay, so now it makes sense to me.
Okay, if, I just want to make this clear, because I, I think we have actually perfectly followed the traffic calming procedure the council put in place. The residents in there, in that area were complaining about excessive speeds and stop sign violations, and if you recall, our policy measures, it's a stepped approach. And we start with enforcement, regular enforcement, followed by targeted enforcement, and then some consideration, and then proceed to a speed and volume study, which was performed by the engineers. Our reaction to the speed and volume study is the next step in that traffic calming policy that we've adopted. That took us to the traffic working group, which concluded that multiple pavement markings out there is the best and most likely approach to be able to provide some results. As a result of that discussion, the city engineer pointed out that the inconsistency in the treatment of those intersections is a safety issue. It's not an issue intended to slow people down, it's intended to avoid accidents, quite frankly, from people who would treat those two intersections, which are identical and in very close proximity, different, especially for inexperienced drivers, as Mr. Zampito pointed out. If you're driving through one of those and you get to a three-way stop and you go 1,000, 1,500 feet or so, and you get to one and it's just simply completely signed differently as a one-stop sign, two, two stops there, right? One stop.
One stop.
You know, the, the, your, your mind tends to want to treat it in the same fashion as you did. So, if you're thinking then that the, that the people coming in the other two directions have to stop and you proceed through that intersection and they don't stop, we've got a problem on our hands. So, this is an outgrowth of our review as a traffic calming. The traffic calming measures that the traffic working group has recommended are strictly pavement markings. We're going to be, we'd like to place some double yellow lines around the curbs to keep people in their lanes, to avoid the acceleration that we see as they approach those intersections, and then to do some additional markings on the, on the pavement to indicate very clearly what those speed limits are in residential zones. But, we, we have followed that consistently. As a matter of fact, you're referring, Mr. Marn, I know, to an email that I sent out to one of the residents in that area. One of the requests by those residents was for some type of speed bump or speed bumps in the roadway, not eligible. So, we did that review as part of the desired outcome by those persons in that neighborhood, but according to the policy that we developed, it's simply not eligible because it lacks curbs and sidewalks in that area. So, among other reasons that would probably make it a poor choice for speed bumps in that roadway, it's just strictly ineligible for that reason, so.
But, Mr. President, just to clarify, it's not, whether or not the stop signs should go there, what I'm, what I was not aware of, or maybe not intelligent enough to understand, is there's such a thing as consistency versus calming? And this is basically what came out of the group?
Right.
You know, I thought that, you know, it goes through the process and it goes through the process, and we decide this is what the first step we're going to take is, and this is going to be the second step. So, that's how I came out of that, those work sessions with our new traffic calming program, and I didn't realize, like I said, I just received an email, I know we've been talking about this among, there's probably about a dozen other locations in the city, and it's more of a procedure effect of what I was unsure of, and that's like, where did this come from?
And to your original point, we apologize for not giving you more advanced information about this going forward. We had the traffic working group late, was it?
Last week.
Late last week, Thursday, and, you know, really just recently thought that because you're meeting today, I think from our standpoint, because typically, our procedure now internally is if a traffic, if a new traffic control device, whether it be a sign, usually a sign is placed in, in the public right of way somewhere, we'll base that based on a warrant analysis. And the way it works is that, that analysis is done, if it meets a particular warrant, we will sign, I will sign off on that and we'll keep that in the public record so that we know the reason and the time and date and location of that. Going forward, in, in this particular instance, council deemed it appropriate to have that intersection signed a three-way stop without the benefit of a warrant analysis, and there, there was good reason at that time for it. We're simply saying at this time that it's, we believe that for the safety reasons that we've talked about here, that it would be best to have those signed in a similar fashion. So, we, we just would think that it would be appropriate for council to take the same action it did to sign that other intersection.
No, I'm good, 100% I hear you. It's just I said more procedural than anything else, because like I said, I was.
And I think that helps to inform the public, because you're correct. We don't view traffic signs, in particular, stop signs. There are some signs that can be served as a traffic calming device, such as children playing ahead or, you know, a deaf child playing ahead, or playground, or something that advises the public of a, of a good reason to slow down, but stop signs generally are not thought of that way.
Okay. Thanks, Sarah Council.
Mr. Donovan.
Just basically, yeah, I think it went through a process, very, process very well. I mean, it's not 1,000 feet long, it doesn't have a 10% grade, it's, it's not 30 feet wide, it has no curbs or sidewalks. I mean, that's, the, the accidents are minimal, they're not, they don't meet the requirement. So, basically, nothing met the requirement of the, of the traffic calming committee, so this is where it ended up. And it makes a lot of sense. And I think we did, I think we did talk about this a lot, stop signs, in, in the traffic calming meetings, and I, we just never really came to a definition, but that, tonight we did. That's where it ended up, and I'm, I'm happy with the way it went. I mean, it sounds like you went through all the steps, and here's where we ended up. And I think it worked, I think it worked very well. It worked very well.
I, I agree. Actually, we are following the policy, it's just a, a step that requires, we haven't reached a step because of, as you pointed out, the conditions on that particular piece of roadway that rise to the level of a physical impediment or alteration being made to that roadway.
Right.
Which would require an initiative petition by the residents and owners in that neighborhood.
Right.
And a further council action by committee. So, when those conditions don't exist, we're still following our traffic calming policy. It is eligible for traffic calming, but only up to the point of what I mentioned, some pavement marking and some relatively minor enhancements out there.
Mr. President, one last thing.
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Marn.
In going forward, you know, we talked about, just so that everyone's on the same page, of course, a staff report, you know, showing different things. But, I guess a question for the law director, instead of just bringing this up under new business, shouldn't this be part of our agenda, like an open pavement cut? So, that way it's under the city manager's report, because we are, are giving the administration to go ahead to enact on something, and it's, and it's, it's part of the agenda?
Well, it certainly could be. And, you know, if you wanted to, you know, to be able to find it in the future, you know, we have this resource now where you could put in that information through the clerk's computer and come up with the actual ordinance whereby this location was approved, rather than do it on a, on a voice vote, which will show up in the minutes, certainly. But, a more formal way to do it would be by an ordinance, and that's something that the council, you know, can certainly take up, making a change to the code to provide for that, because there is a section in the code that talks about the manager and safety director having the authority to designate, you know, certain of the traffic control devices along with the engineer. So, yeah, you, you could do more. I'd like to just clear up one thing if I could, and that is Wheeler Court already has a stop sign. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so when we talk about Wheeler Court, that's just a reference, the three-way stop is going to be where French and Chandle intersect. Because they, they both curve in a, I grew up on Chandle, I'm real familiar with it.
Same spot.
And Wheeler, Wheeler has a stop sign there already, and, and so Wheeler is really not in that intersection. I just wanted the record to be clear that that three-way stop is going to be where French and Chandle intersect to go down into the hollow.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just a moment. Mr. Blake, did you want to make a comment? I'm sorry, I think.
No, I think.
You got lost in the shuffle.
I got, I got lost, yeah. I forgot even what I was.
Hey, it's our first one on a new program, we're doing good. All right, now, we ironed out the bugs.
Okay, so we have, first, do we have a second? Okay, please call the roll. Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President.
Yes.
Moving on to more new business, I'd like to make a nomination.
Could I make the announcement first, and then we'll do that? Could I just announce that we have the position and ask for?
You're sure, I was going to do the whole thing.
See? Yeah, I cut you off, so now you're jumping in, right? We're good, we're good. Council has a position for the Community Arts Commission for an unexpired four-year term ending 12/31/2018. Are there any nominations for that position?
Yes, Mrs. President, I do. I'd like to nominate Patricia Wacowski.
Are there any other nominations? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Julie, please call the roll. Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling.
Yes.
Mr. Kirschner.
Yes.
Mr. Krieger.
Yes.
Mr. Landig.
Yes.
Mr. Marn.
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Okay, welcome to Patty Wacowski, to the Community Arts Commission. Persons before council, we have one person this evening, Mark O'Bannon. Could you please state your name and address, please, for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I was going to say, I wanted a question, if I want a response from somebody, can I do that at this time or not?
Could you state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, my name's Mark O'Bann, I live at 5430 Lakes.
Okay.
I'm basically here because I'm complaining about the time of the tractors at the Blackbrook Golf Course. Now, I've already gone a few rounds with Mr. Kamanski, okay, and then when I didn't get satisfaction with Mr. Kamanski, I called Mr. Philippiak's office, and the lady that I talked to was very nice, she took my information, she says that she was going to get back to me. Then again, Mr. Kamanski called and said he wasn't going to compromise. Okay, I'm on social security disability, so I get woken up at 5:30 in the morning, okay, I can always go back to sleep, but why should I have to be woken up at 5:30 every morning by tractors, okay, from the golf course? Can anybody explain to me?
Could you address council?
I wanted to address council, too.
With your Hammond's.
Now, I put a call in to Mr. Krueger, okay, my councilman, two weeks ago, and as always, you're unresponsive, because I know how you are, you're off for the golf course, and you're not for the resident, because we are complaining. Does my sister complain last year about this? Okay, and I thought it would be taken care of, but obviously, okay, according to Mr. Kamanski, okay, if, he's off for the golf course, none, the residents don't care, because that's what he told me. Mr. Kamanski told me that he wasn't going to compromise, there was going to be no change in schedule for anything. Okay, and I am sick and tired of getting woken up at 5:30 in the morning by the tractors, especially on Sunday. Okay, because I got into a shouting match with the guy that works at the golf course on Sunday, so he sends his, his tractors out earlier on Sundays than the other days. Now, the other days usually come around 6:30, 7 o'clock, okay, but on Sundays, they come at 5:30, and some of them, okay, they've come in the dark. And I'm going to ask a question to council, is it safe for guys to be coming out there at 5:30 in the morning in, in, in the dawn? Is that safe? I've, I've seen them out there at 5:30 when it's dark, like October and November. And to be honest, okay, me and my sister moved out here three years ago, okay, and I've talked to a few of the neighbors down the street, okay, about this. Okay, and they've told me, and I asked them, "Have you complained about certain situations?" Now, two of them complained about, number one, golfers are always on their lawn, and number two, another guy complained about there was hornet's nest, that he was walking his dog, and I told him, and I gave him Kamanski's number. Okay, and I wanted to ask them tonight, okay, did they call him? Because they told me, okay, this is long-term residents, have told me that, it does no good to complain because it's a good old boys' network down here. Okay, and I could see that in my case, because like Kamanski said, you don't, you don't matter. I'm going to do what I'm going to do, I'm not going to change, and that's it. That's what he told me, and I'm sick and tired of it. Now, if I have to go, if I have to sue the city manager, okay, to get peace and quiet, I deserve. That's what he told me, and I'm sick and tired of it. Now, if I have to go, if I have to sue the city manager, okay, to get peace and quiet, I deserve peace and quiet. I don't need to be woken up at 5:30 in the morning, because everybody I've talked to says that's ridiculous, to get woken up at 5:30 in the morning, okay, every day. How would you like it if I went to all your, all your houses and started a lawnmower up at 5:30 in the morning? You wouldn't like that. You wouldn't like that. You wouldn't like that. Neither of you wouldn't like that. So why? Doesn't matter if the golf course is exempt from the law, you should at least follow the law, even if you're exempt. The law says some the clock on weekdays, 8:30 on weekends. If I can't, if I can't run my lawnmower before 8:30 in the morning on the weekends, and before 7 o'clock in the morning, then that golf course shouldn't be, shouldn't be doing their tractors before 7. I'm sick and tired of it.
Mr. O'Bannon, could you please wind down? Your time's about up, if you could.
I'm, I'm just saying, I'm sick and tired of it, okay? I'm tired of getting the runaround. I've got the runaround, and then I, then I got, then I got Kamanski again, he told me the same thing. I'm not going to compromise. So what am I supposed to do?
Thank you for your.
If I, if I can't get any satisfaction from you guys, the only thing I got to do is sue you for disturbing my peace, and that's what I'm going to do.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Because as, as a resident of Menter, and a resident of the United States of America, I deserve to have peace and quiet.
Thank you, Jim.
So approved.
If anybody wants to talk to me, I'll be right here, right here.